And.
Started, just for all those who are via the computer. If you can mute if you are not. We were not speaking that will help with background. Other words, I will be.
So thank you. Thank you very much. And welcome back everyone and back and retiring.
Back for a short period.
I have a little. A nice little lunch for you at time to be determined. I can get everybody together, so I look forward to that. Just can't thank you enough for all of your years, 30, 30 years.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two years of service. Very impressive. How it would be where it is without what you've done. I personally really appreciate.
Thank you.
The professionalism and insight and institutional knowledge that you have. Related to everything that we're working on, so I thank you and I know that's that good by everybody on the board. Campus, Campus Wood, we had a work session and we have work session with that. Anything coming up?
Another scheduled term.
Another scheduled term, okay, that's good. We have the first at seven oh, at seven oh five, but we could open up a public hearing for subdivision. One lot into two and industrial district at sixty-six hundred New Venture Gear. What do we have representing?
Being named Mr. Lever, Chuck White, Phil Martin, LaDuce, representing and with me tonight, I have Jason. Simmons, got it wrong again, from Top Architects and Ashlyn Mauer. From my office, awesome.
Okay.
Also, I should mention Brett McGowan, Peter, the owner of Brett.
We do have some people in the audience, so do you want to just put that up that so the subdivision can do that element, please? Stephanie, if you wanted to come up here, you're more than welcome.
Okay.
You want, when this comes up, you can just describe what you're doing.
Should we, may I step around a little bit?
Please, be welcome.
All right, well, again, good evening. Thanks for having us here tonight. Obviously, the first agenda item, it does go hand to hand with the second one, so it crosses across details to touch on both. Given the public hearing, the first public hearing is relative to the subdivision. The project, this is our second agenda item, the second public hearing, the site plan. Does contain a two lot subdivision. The plan would be to subdivide the parent lot of the former New Venture Gear site. It's currently just over a hundred and nine existing acres on the remaining parent lot. A bunch of years ago, if you remember FedEx purchase, the northeast corner, and that was subdivided off. The plan for this project would do, be a very similar plan to FedEx in size as well as scope. And the project would look to subdivide off a roughly fourteen and a quarter acre piece of the parent, remaining parent parcel. For the purpose of development of a warehouse distribution facility.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that has an interest in this other than applicants, colleagues? Get any hands raised.
Do not see any hand raised.
Okay, that's good. So don't wait till, see if the timers here. Why don't we leave this open and we'll move on to number two, the, the public hearing determination of lead agency. And what you're looking for relative to the.
Okay, so do you want me to touch on the site plan now?
Sure.
Okay, so on this subdivided lot, the fourteen and a quarter acres, we're looking to develop roughly seventy thousand. I got it written down in the mid last. Seven thousand, seventy thousand eight hundred sixty-four plus one square foot warehousing and distribution facility. The majority of that is, you know, max side where the warehousing and distribution product in, product out. About ten thousand square feet plus or minus on this north side of the building would be opposite administration space. The, the new building, as you can see up here on the screen, would encompass the majority of. What is now the western parking lot of the former New Venture Gear site. Back in the day, this was one of the main employee lots, when there were thousands of employees coming in on a daily basis. Basically, the footprint of what is now a large asphalt parking lot will be the building itself. Parking for visitors and employees coming in from New Venture Gear. On the east or excuse me, west side of the building and, and north and all of the parking spaces, we'll call them. To the east and to the south are to house distribution vehicles, thirty-five foot trailers and incoming tractor trailers that would unload. Materials that would then go to the local delivery vehicles. I think some of them are smaller, like FedEx sized trucks, you know, just the standard, same unit cargo deliveries that go to local, local stores, local distribution.
Do you want to disclose who your perspective and it is?
So. Three to one.
Well.
Continue on or?
Well, we're gonna, let me, I think we can, and the number one, close the public hearing, I hear any, any issues. So, okay, so we'll, I make a motion to close.
Same.
Public hearing, I didn't add one, second, all in favor?
Hi, Keith.
Okay, on project vector for the determination of lead agency. I propose that the, what planning board be the lead agency? A second?
A second.
All in favor? Okay, I would like to commend the applicant that working simultaneously on. The whole master plan for the site, which is very logistic relative to how this all fits.
Sure.
Is there anything else you might want to add to, to, if there are any questions here for the board?
Well, relative to, certainly entertain any questions for the board, of course. I guess relative to project vector. I think so important aspects to note. First off, all what I will call non-commercial level traffic will enter from New Venture Gear drive. That will come in here and that is into what is the, the non-secure area of the facility. All commercial traffic, which would be the incoming and exiting trucks. Come in via Chrysler Lane and then entrance or an entrance on the south side of the site. There is an emergency gate and entrance on the precise, so if there ever once the situation for. Either enter or exit for emergency reasons, that's certainly possible. But the, the plan being generally all, well, all, not generally all, first trap will come in from the south side via Chrysler Lane. We have looked at traffic, leak traffic impact study has been prepared and submitted to the town. In short, there's no real impacts, the traffic increases are relatively low. So we're not seeing any, I think, a decrease in the level of service or operational capacities of the existing network out there. We don't see the need for any mitigation, which would include signals or. But left turn lanes, for example, or otherwise, everything seems to function quite well. But the additional traffic volume, which ability overall quite. Stormwater, I know has always been a big question on this overall site, something that's worth touching on here quickly. The, the overall larger parcel, which includes the FedEx side of the site at fourteen plus acres. Is generally tributary to the two stormwater ponds, which are on the east, eastern periphery of the site. Interestingly, our site is not tributary or is not at all tributary to those stormwater ponds are actually upgrading. This portion of the site actually collects into those drainage from the parking lot and ties directly into the fifty-four inch. Reinforced concrete pipe, which hits westerly and ultimately discharges it to Lake Creek watershed. That same fifty-four inch does take the flows that come off the rest of the site through those ponds. But I think what's important to note is, is because we're not tributary to the stormwater ponds, we will be developing. Stormwater mitigation on the western side and the green grass area today. That will address stormwater runoff from the fourteen and a quarter acre site. And the redevelopment of the site is being treated as a redevelopment project. We do recognize that due to its tributary nature to Lake Creek, there are additional requirements and the town of Dewitt's code has. Site more stringent requirements and minimal D E C standards that we're able to meet all of those as well.
And you work directly with Mark Parrish, if you know.
I, I've had communications with Mr. Parrish, I had spoken with him directly back and forth in the last few weeks. But we have open lines. I do expect to hear from him all the questions if he has it.
Do you see yourself holding water or just being tensioned or just taking a storm surge?
It is wet on National, I'm correct? So there, there will be a minimal amount of water that is held in there. But in general, if it's going to take the peaks off, then most of it will remain as, as grass and mobile, but they'll be able to. Deal with the quantity and quantity and quality treatment.
So Kevin, did you have anything?
If you just point out, uh, that the circle there or?
Right here, yeah. We did have, one of the older plans was a nice color rendering and I missed those to the point that it really kind of show off where everything is and it stands out, I apologize. There is a grading plan, probably a couple sheets further in, there it is right there, I guess, that really kind of highlights a little better. The pond, so this would be the deeper portion of pond and this would be the wet portion. Upper areas would generally be dry, except after storm conditions.
My only comment on the design of the basin is going to be that it presents them when the water element presents, the intentional presents on the public side for major thoroughfare. Looks like a engineered solution. To me, it's a failed solution, it needs to look like it's part of nature in a way, so whether or not just sort of clean, retaining forms. It's how, how one gets the same volume, it's nice gentle earth forming, land forming, so there's undulation to the form, so it looks like it's a natural element, that's a benefit. Public versus adjustment like that, see?
Doing over.
That's where I got toward the wire, so I put a ditch over there.
Doing over. And we certainly have, we have some, we have some legroom and, and space over there to.
Yeah, it seems like it's one of the.
As the curvature to kind of keep the square edge, we're engineers, we like square.
Yeah, I know.
Square right.
That's why I like to sound the board. Emily or Stephanie, did you either want to make any comments in the broad context or?
Nothing that I don't think that we've already touched on. We've talked a little bit about, you know, needing the traffic information. Obviously, we want to get as many plants in there as possible. We spoke the other day about possibly adjusting the circulation over by this end of the building.
Emily, maybe I could touch on that if you skip back a land or two. This latest rendition did change, change it a bit. We still end up with a bit of a throw in here, which I know is one of the comments that you had, but we're able to, we did have originally parking swinging all the way down here.
Yeah.
And kind of a, no, nothing on this side of the drive aisle, so we've kind of pulled everything to a line to try to consolidate it a little bit.
I feel like you might be able to go a little bit farther with that, if you put parking all the way at the very end, opposite. So you have a double stacked driveway instead of a single stack and then you'd also have people more by the front.
Are you referring to up here?
Yeah. So people wouldn't have to walk as far to get to that, that main entry.
Emily, come to that. Emily, we're already committed to a double, a double, double stack at one side and they have a nice single stack. And a green zone that's wrapping on the corner, which gives a great, I think, great opportunity for screenings, public, two better elevations at the end of this, this thing. By double stacking the other side, we're just putting more parking, more asphalt towards the main street. Where I think if it was getting on one side, except that we buy it, we treat it landscape wise, so. I got it, that's Tuesday morning.
You know? And, yeah, yeah, so I mean, I get where you're coming from, like. And, and I don't know if it's, if there is enough room here to provide, you know, an ample screening if there was parking up on that, that end. The other parking that we had talked about was with the trucks down here in the south side. But you have this kind of parking that's going on behind, so it appears to be a little bit of a wall back here.
There's a, there's a grade wall, there's a.
Right.
That is, that's a small retaining wall, just to address a step and grade there.
Right. Parking lower or than the grade or higher than the grade there?
It's, it's actually going to be lower to address the docks.
So the dock dropped.
These docks dropping down?
Yeah, the docks actually dropping down, it's all the way.
Are all the docks fixed or are they?
I believe this side are all four foot, on the east side, I think everything's two foot three, I'm not sure if those are adjustable or not.
Yeah, the south wall is, they're all forty-eight inches and the east wall, the southeast corner, there are three of forty-eight inches and then the rest are at two foot three.
Correct, which are these guys here, so what's wrong with two foot three?
And then you have tents along the retaining wall on the, on the grade last, right side?
Yes.
Yeah, we talked about if there was a possibility of rotating this parking up so that it wasn't along this edge. Mainly so that you could take, you know, the green space and bring it up farther. And actually treat this like a road front engine that is along right certainly.
Well, one thing we do, I, I understand where you're getting at there. We, we do need some of the area for marshaling. What will happen is with the marshaling, the tractors will actually drop them in there and they get moved around with the smaller tucks.
Okay.
Throughout that, so circulation does become a bit challenging in there to be, you know, forthright and honest. And which is why we have the parking oriented that way, I believe if we rotate it. I'd have to double check, but I think we get into losing space or two there also. We certainly, you know, this does have, the site is viewable from. From the main public room of New Venture Gear Drive. We do have a landscaping plan that should provide some park ring, that's included a little further in, in the set.
Sorry, we, I don't, yeah, this is more of a public hearing, I don't want to get.
But I guess that gives you a good sense of what we're proposing there. If there are any further questions, we'll certainly entertain them relative to.
I want to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Was it officially open?
We look forward to working with you and just stay in touch with Nick in terms of whether it's a work session or you want to get some designs, elevation stuff to the board.
Well, we're, our hope is to keep this moving and I know we've indicated that through prior work sessions and discussions with the town, so. Our goal is to stay on your radar, on your agendas and, and move this through, so I think. Any face to face, we can do directly with your consultants and I understand that there are comments forthcoming, I'm not sure if kind of it's your review or. Or possibly.
Mark Parrish will have them, plus we need to check to on the. Remediation for the gravel, this place down.
Yeah, I didn't hear back on that yet, but.
We want to make sure everything's.
I understood, you know, the, understanding the, the issues going on at that and trying to myself, keep the presentation separate, but I understand.
We gotta, we gotta consider both.
I understand that from your, your perspective, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All right, very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna combine during, yes, Kevin, I'm gonna combine three and four, is that what it's spoken for you?
It's signed with me, yeah.
Agenda items, this is a concept review. Talking with legal counsel, there's several issues we're still trying to get our head around, so if you could present a summary of what you have, this is a. Automotive sales use within an existing. Multi-tenant, twenty-one thousand square feet in one and the concept on Baker Street, that's Twin Oaks Drive. Similar use, sales facility in industrial district, there's not any for the education board, there's no garage work that's being done on a lot of these sites. It's, it's sales primarily, computer sales.
Well, it's, it's auto sales and I'm Kevin Ryan, I represent the DMV property, it's a principal and, and MS is essentially the co-principal. It, it's an auto dealership in the most general sense of the term, because when you think of an auto dealership, you think of Derby Village. You have a building with acres, acres of inventory out on lots, that is not what this is, because it's a different model of car dealership for the twenty-first century. What it is, it's really, I guess for lack of a better term, an entrepreneurial incubator, where. Small business people are just starting out the, the business, in the auto sale business, which are primarily minorities, females. Open up these businesses and they're selling used cars, but the way it works now is with the internet where someone will call them up and say, I'd like to buy a new car and they'll have a conversation, what do you want? And then these dealers will then scour their sources and go to auctions, procure the car and then sell it to their customer. Now, as a result, what you don't have, if you don't have a garage, you don't have inventory, you don't have even foot traffic, really. Because these are all transactions that are occurring online or, or over the phone, or if they're meeting, it's for a cup of coffee and a Dunkin' Donuts and they. They have the conversation that way, but even that, that's, that's the exception rather than the rule. What we're talking about here is strictly internet based transactions. Now, the reason we're here today is because we live in the state of New York, which means we get to be dealing with the DMV. And the DMV has a number of different regulations, which governs auto dealerships and these regulations, if you read them, were clearly put in place. In the early part of the twentieth century, back when, again, you're talking about one building, the acres of inventory. You've got to have a certain number of parking spots, you've got to have signage on the building and most importantly, what you have to have is a physical location. Again, what my client does in these two buildings is he rents out these offices for nominal value. But again, you're talking about multiple dozens of offices within the buildings, we're generating a small monthly income and that's what enables to make a profit of these buildings. Because quite frankly, the buildings don't have another use, you're talking about office buildings, which are broken up into, how many are there at Twin Oaks Drive? How many individual offices with that building?
In the building at Twin Oaks, there's sixty.
Sixty offices, so what it is, you walk in the hall, you see a room, oh, then it's locked, that's, that's the office, that's the Pete Weber Auto Dealers. You're not, you're not seeing foot traffic, you're not seeing inventory, all you're seeing essentially is a shell building, which, believe it or not, is generating income, which enables my client to upkeep the buildings. It keeps them from turning into zombie properties, it keeps them from having the grass get overgrown, the roof caving in, the windows being broken. What he wants to be is a good neighbor. When he bought the two buildings we're talking about here, both Baker Street and Twin Oaks Drive, they're both empty, they're both vacant and. You know, when I went out to see both buildings, I'm, I'm driving around and I'm struck by the number of empty buildings that are out there, I mean, look at, we're coming off a pandemic. Class A office space downtown city, you can't give it away. Office space where he is, it's even more, there's even more of a surplus of it, so again, what he's trying to do. Realistically is twofold, number one, provide the most economical use of the building while at the same time minimizing the impact on the neighborhood. Because again, as I mentioned, again, and this is important, you're not seeing foot traffic and you're not seeing auto traffic. It's almost, if you will, the perfect neighborhood, because it's quiet, but there's always going to be upkeep. But it's also providing opportunity too, because the startups that you're seeing in these buildings, they grow and over time, they sometimes. Roll into businesses that actually do turn into one of your bigger operations and they can become a self-sustaining business without the need to be in my client's business incubator. Now, he's been operating for a while without any problem until recently, there was the issue of the lack of segment approval, which is why we're here today. I have in my file and I've not provided this to the planning board yet, letters from a number of different neighbors where they want, they asked if the board looked favorably upon this application, because he is such a good neighbor and because they want to see this business continue to operate. Now, I know we've got some issues, obviously, there's a signage requirement and all that's something that we may have mentioned with Andrew and Nick when we met before. He has all these, the red, sort of, the red signs that the DMV requires, that's a DMV requirement, there's nothing we can do about it. What I'd like to do here tonight is to have this concept review meeting with planning board, where we can have an open dialogue as to what it's going to take to essentially. Get us to a point where the town of Dewitt is comfortable with this, then we can hopefully talk to somebody at the DMV and realize that you've got these signs on the front of the building. Facing a street that nobody drives down. If you're looking for a conspicuous signage, you can put it on the front of the building, no one's going to see it, because again, it's a deadhead street. I mean, no one's going to drive down that swamp with a next door, which I think the town owns.
Well, I, you know, I don't, I'm not cutting you off.
Sure, no, go ahead, that's fine.
This is just a dialogue in terms of that it's industrial, the uses is, is, could be used. Are, are clearly, we have issues at the site with parking relative to what the numbers of people are there and what's required for the, the use. We have to examine that and the signage. And it's a kind of a test point too, relative to what the DMV requires and what our signage allows. I mean, in our, in the, in the old paradigm, you have a, a garage with one sign. Not forty, and so how that works with us, it doesn't fly at all relative to us requiring. My code was, was the sign requirement on, on that building, well, it's one hundred twenty.
A tight tenant?
Yeah, it's one hundred twenty.
Hundred twenty square feet, so. You would ask me previously relative to the DMV, that yes, we are analyzing, you know, this is in, in process and.
What's the, what's the DMV perspective on this building a bit about these?
Let's say as I, there.
The DMV, the DMV rules say that the sign must be of a certain size.
Yeah.
And it must be on the front of the building facing the road. So again, it's a rule, like many rules, have an air of Albany, that yeah, it makes sense on paper, when you actually look at it in practice during the time to win out Twin Oaks Drive.
How are you, I'm, I'm okay, so is anyone going, our customers going here? It's just me hanging up my shingles like I can work remotely and.
Yeah, they, they. Because the DMV has requirements that auto dealers have to have a physical location and one of the six inch quantity to the state.
Yes, that's exactly, so I can't, and that's what we're, we're, we're the process, this is, I can't.
My theory was going to be to have a hallway down, you know, have a gallery, a gallery, a rogues' gallery of signage, so when you come to. This address, just, you know, if someone's going to come in there, then certainly the photos of the cars you sell, there's a serious volume of DMV signs. That makes the DMV happy and gets them off the street for us and everybody walks away happy.
So relative to the incubator, relative to your entrepreneurial spirit and the use of that building, we don't have any problems at all. That's not the issue, it does not need a special use permit, because you're not doing any garage work. The signage and then the parking, because I believe the New York State requires X number of spaces. And would you want to repeat with that apartment?
What is it, two spaces per?
The DMV requires three spaces for each dealer license there, so.
We have, we have.
We have.
Parking.
Would you have?
We have it, we have it pre-made, but the DMV also has other requirements about.
And are used.
They're not, yeah.
But they have to separate.
They have to be separated, which why you have the Jersey barriers and I don't know what it is in County Anadaga, but you know, I have colleagues that have something similar up in, I think it's Henrietta and Victor, where. They've got a sign up there that says, Lee Cupworth Auto Dealer, Peter Webber Bennett, and that's fine in Monroe County, but here in Anadaga County, they want it in minor, which again. My client sits here today and again, what he wants to do is have a listing sent to you guys, you tell us what you want from us, so we can get to a place where we can get site matter approval and. I will take whatever you're going to propose, we'll go to the DMV and, and say, what, let's think about what makes sense here, because again. The rules as they exist are not geared towards the business model that these people.
No, we get it, we get it, and, and you know, our ideal would be one sign. Whatever your, your legal.
Name is.
Is, and then, and somehow acknowledging that you have X number of, of others. And then, because people are going to stop saying, I, I want to go there, this is not an impulse buy. So the, and then the other issue is, is the Jersey barriers and those things, which we would not allow. And if, if it's three per, you may or may not have enough parking, but again, it all has to fit in with our site plan requirement, so. Want to get our head around that and work with you, we, this is very helpful, I mean, we, we, we were getting it. Both of our, our staff from the planning development have been working real hard at first, it was, you know, that's something we can approve the way it is at this point. But as we get it, we can make a recommendation as to what you'll need.
Yeah.
And maybe that you can take to the New York State DOT and see what.
And that, and that's helpful, because what I don't want to be in a situation is no way, no how, never going to happen in town, because then again. There's not a lot of other uses that my client has to these buildings, then what you're going to do is you have a. Then what you're going to do is you have a lot of, of these startup entrepreneurs who have no place to go. And then not only is my client got a property of a money-lending business, but these entrepreneurs have no place to.
Oh, we're in the test point two.
Yeah.
We, we cannot approve it.
I get it.
I, I've said it since, I've had several calls that have been very supportive, some of you, friends that I didn't know still existed, called me. That's okay, no, it's the business we're in. Hey, hey, go ahead, Kevin.
So what is, what is the size requirement from the DMV perspective?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Like a pretty good size.
It's a sign?
Yeah, it's about two feet by eighteen.
Two by three, I think.
Make sure at Norway, go take your car and come back around the way.
The sign's a hundred twenty?
Well, that's, that's what our code allows, Matt.
Okay, so that's six, so that's, that's, why don't I do electronic signs that rotate?
We don't, that's, that's.
The really odd thing with this, with these DMV signs, is that they mean absolutely nothing to the customer.
Right.
Because you're not going to go in there and go, oh, yeah, that sign matches up to, nobody's going to know that.
It's a number.
It's really only. Right. It'd be one thing if people actually come in these businesses and then looking at the sign, which they would never do anyway. But no one's even coming to this building, nobody shows up. And so we've got three parking spots per office, which sit vacant, which we have to plow every time it snows. But no, again, no one ever comes, this is strictly an, an online, it's a, it's a, it's a.
They need to put them quiet.
I do have, yes.
Yeah, before we move on, um, I'm, I'm really curious with respect to the fact that you don't need all those parking spaces. I'm curious about the history of the area that was created and leveled and gravelled over in the back. You know, we did a site that said, you know, that there were some cars in that area. I mean, is that just kind of a reserve for those three spaces that aren't really expected to be built?
There are some cars in that area because in addition to renting out these offices to these startup entrepreneurial auto dealers, my client also has Crowell.
We operate.
The operator there, his main business operator's out of there. So he has employees that park there and do their, so there's going to be some cars there. And once in a while, you may have.
And there are dealers that have.
There's, once in a while, they'll, they'll store a car there, you know, because if so, if they, someone says, I want an eighty-five Lincoln Continental, he goes to the auto auction in Pennsylvania, brings it back, it sits there until someone comes and picks it up. And it's just, you know, that's, but again, you're not talking, again, this isn't Trivers Village where you have acres and acres of inventory. That's just not the business model that these people have.
Well, we have lot coverage requirements.
Yeah.
That, uh, but again, that plays off into what they need and what they have.
Exactly, and it's just the existing area lot where it's paved, it doesn't seem like there's really any circulation patterns here, there's no striping. There were a couple large dumpster, dumpsters, so I'm, I'm guessing that there needed to, but, you know, just move the trailers around, however they're not there. But I, I'm wondering if that could potentially go away, be returned to green space and then the area, this name is asphalt, be striped, reorganized in a way that would allow all of those things to occur.
Well, that, well, again, that's the purpose of, hopefully the purpose of this meeting where if you have a concern, it gets relayed on behalf of planning board to us and.
Stephanie is one of our consultants.
Okay.
So I, I, we said, see, that's why I want to jump here. So, uh, yeah, she, she, she keeps us abreast of the, the code and everything that we have to be very cognizant of as we make these types of decisions.
Sure. Yeah, and if, and if there's a concern that you have with that, again, we're on the bus with signage and parking and we can.
Well, we'll get a checklist out. They're very good at that and very detailed, that, that's something that you can sort of share with the state. And, uh, but I, I think your, your argument is more philosophical in terms of, of, of the old model versus your new model.
It clearly is and that's, it's a philosophical argument, it's not limited to the DMV and auto dealerships in the state, obviously. But again, what I'm looking to do is get from you the checklist of what it is you need, we can do with the DMV. And if there's, if there's a way that we can't get there, well, let's see if there's some other process, whether it's a variance or something else that we can do to allow this to continue to operate. Because again, I don't see any other use for these buildings out there.
Oh, you know, the code is not variable, so signage code is, it's not variable. You know, so step back to certain other issues that I have, but to stop this point that we want to clean up the lot, we want to do things that would make it even more appealing. That's our opportunity now, but we're, we're certainly not against, uh, the, the concept and what you're trying to do. And we need to, uh, make sure that we haven't violated our own code.
Yeah. There is, there is a, there is a major benefit to this too, though, is that these are facilities like this are taking the car dealerships that are popping up, these, these entrepreneurial, uh, car dealerships from residential neighborhoods. Because we've had that already on Rock Cut Road and they're, they're a pain. Yeah, and you're in a residential area, so, you know, it, it's, it's an industrial district, like it's been pointed out. It's, it is off the beaten path, but we have to also, this is going to set a precedent for whatever we do in the future with these.
Yeah.
So we have to look at it closely.
Yep, so, yeah, I, if, I had a thought, but just offline, but, uh, after the fact, I think I give you a card. Sure, call. I do have a contact at the DMV. Scary thought.
I want to know why.
It was a, it was a tenant of mine that I own property at the university, West Syracuse University. And, uh, but he's very helpful and, you know, they, I found them to be, you know, I won't say flexible, but these are issues that are, you know, someone's got a little on. We'll see what happens. Uh, any other questions for the rest of the board?
Yeah.
No, this is, this is.
All four, just going to find a way.
Yes.
Let's get to, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, I would like to close, um, I think, uh, the, uh, did we close the project vector though, I want to be sure that we closed that public hearing. All right, and then, uh, a motion, do you have any other questions?
Peter, did we want to go over a paper report, the other project associated that you have with it?
Looking at that one too, just because there's so many like paper issues as far as easements, subdivision lines, there's like a building constructed over a property line. I think it would be worth it to just kind of touching on those issues.
That's a point, that's a point a lot, a lot of just coverage.
Point a lot before driving, uh, Baker Street.
I get it, if there's issues that the town has, it's.
We're willing to listen. I'll take the lead on this, Stephanie.
It's, I mean, we're just talking in terms of like understanding, right, we have this survey that shows the buildings over property line. What, you know, what are the absence easements between all of these properties? You know, and understanding what the division is, which parking belongs to which building. Is it at all ones, you know?
Lot of local lots with.
It's a multiple plus.
They're looking to put lots together to.
Right, so this is the question is, can, sometimes, so, divide this together into one.
Right, combined.
One combined unit.
If, if that's what it takes to get this done, I guess we're, I'm not going to say yes or no to anything really at this point, I mean, I'm going to.
Oh, we're just here, we're just here.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Just dialogue to.
Right.
Because you, you either have to have access to, uh, even parking and everything else, it'd be beneficial to have it as, combined as one, one lot. For you is, and we may not be able to prove it otherwise.
I'm not a real estate expert at all, but, um, they, uh, there was multiple lots that were put together in this survey that I bought when it was sold. And it was important, I don't think, as, asked a couple times, I've reached out to the real estate attorney, I mean, so Holly Sal Wallace, getting, that was how it was. She did the, the closing, all that was worked out, there was an updated survey done, so we'll work through that and think really about the work.
Okay, very helpful.
As for the building, we noticed that there were some recent improvements that occurred there. I'm really curious when the buildings were conjoined with that passageway and then there's like an exterior stair to the upper level. Was that necessarily part of the business operation?
They weren't done by me.
Oh, so that predated this project.
Yes. They weren't too recent then, no.
Well, it looked like it was in good repair, so whoever did it does a good job.
Well, thank you.
Taking anything for public for.
Very helpful, we'll, we'll, you'll get the checklist that you can take that to the, the, uh, New York State DOT and, uh, and we can, uh, we can schedule a work session once we, you're looking over and you talk to Nick.
Yeah, ideally, I'd like to have a work session with the, with the board and the DMV, where we can help these issues out if that's possible, but definitely not possible.
That's, that's, that's something you're going to have to work through. But we'll give you the documentation as to what our issues are and it'll be very clear. Would you make sure when you write this up that you, you identify each of the code requirements?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Before we do that, can you just make a global motion just ratifying that all of the public hearings were properly opened and closed, just so we have a.
Well, we opened them all, so I, I, I'm not so sure I closed it.
Well, let's just make a motion to ratify that all public hearings have been closed.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Jamie never done this to him.
I just kind of make sure, we've never been getting a body here.
Missed by, by our attorney.
It's all good.
All in favor? Okay, thank you all.
I'll make a motion to close.
That's everyone.
All in favor?
All right.
Very, officially, thank you.